Mr. Turello is back from recess. We have a quorum now. We are ready to begin. For the prayer, will Senator Torres kindly lead us? Please rise.
Heavenly Father, as we gather today to convene our September session, I offer praise for the blessings you've bestowed on our close family and friends who are celebrating birthdays today, including our First Lady Lourdes Camacho, who has lived her 94 years on this earth in faithful service to you. I offer thanksgiving for the comfort you provide to our faithful colleagues who are mourning the recent losses of their parents and siblings. May the Terlahe, Munya, and Rogel families be consoled by your promise of everlasting life in your Kingdom of Heaven. We pray also, dear Lord, for the safety and comfort of our brothers and sisters who are ravaged by Hurricane Fiona in Puerto Rico and Typhoon Nan Madol in Japan. We ask for your divine mercy upon the citizens of Ukraine who heroically defend their homeland of war. And also, dear Lord, upon those on Guam who are suffering their own personal battles. It is written in Psalm 57, verses 1 to 2. Be merciful to me, O God. Be merciful to me; for in you my soul takes refuge. In the shadow of your wings I will take refuge till the storms of destruction pass by. Please now join me in reciting our Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Senator. To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of himaladan mastakilu nasacrifisu on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of himaladan mastakilu nasacrifisu, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Staff Sergeant Juan Santos Borja and the family of Staff Sergeant Juan Santos Borja for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
For the reciting of the inefresi, will Senator Ada kindly lead us?
Inefresi.
Would Senator Brown kindly lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn and Senator Nelson, Senator Rogel kindly lead us in the singing of the National Anthem?
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Senators. Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Moylan. Senator Nelson. Senator Perez. Senator Rogel. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegui. Senator Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated August 9, 2022, subject to corrections.
On that motion to approve the Legislative Journal dated August 9, 2022, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imaga, Haagen, Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On that motion that messages from Imaga, Haagen, Guam be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that bills introduced, Bill numbers 330-36COR, 331-36LS, and 332-36LS, 333-36COR, and 334-36COR, and resolutions introduced. Resolution numbers 409-36COR, 410-36LS, through 420-36LS, and 421-36COR through 427-36COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On that motion, on the introduction and first reading of bills and resolution, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now in motions. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to excuse Senators not present for today's legislative session.
On that motion, is there any objection? Senator Titegui? Objection? Oh, sorry. No objection? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of the legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical correction and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Are there any other motions? Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 292LS actions onto the session agenda.
All right. From the report I have from the clerks, that bill has not yet been cleared.
That's 292?
My list is wrong? That has been updated. So 292, can you read the title, please?
An Act, 292-36LS is an act to amend subsections 73-203, subsections 73-204, and subsections 73-205 of Article 2, Chapter 73, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to charges for carrier off-duty services of Customs and Quarantine Officers, and to further establish a Customs Carrier Off-Duty Services Customs Administration Administrative Processing Fee.
On that motion to place Bill number 292-36LS onto the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 298-36LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing onto the session agenda.
Please read the title.
Bill number 298-36LS is an act to amend Section 4A of Public Law 34-70 as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 35-44 relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose de Leongro commercial ports and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue bond proceeds.
On that motion, is there any objection to place Bill 294-36LS as amended by the committee onto the session agenda? Any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. I'm sorry. Can't see today. It's 298-36LS. On that motion to place Bill number 298-36LS, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to move Bill number 219LS at the bottom of the second reading file.
Bill number 219-36LS is already on our second reading. The motion is to move it to the bottom of the second reading. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding.
Sorry. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to reorder the second reading file that all bills to be considered in the Committee of the Whole be at the bottom of the second reading file.
On that motion to put the bills where our standing rules require Committee of the Whole to the bottom of the second reading, is there any objection to that motion? So to be clear, these will go below the bill that was just placed at the bottom of second reading, and these will go below that. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That is all.
Thank you. We are on motions. Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, and good morning to you and my colleagues. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga, Haagen, Guam, I move to place vetoed Bill 239-36COR in the voting file, and I respectfully ask to speak on the motion.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The titled vetoed Bill 239-36COR is an act to add a new 76206 to Article 2 of Chapter 76, Division 3, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Section 13510 to Article 5 of Chapter 13, Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, relative to business license requirements for entitled engaging in child placement services. Madam Speaker, vetoed Bill 239-36 is sponsored by myself, Senator Telo Titegui, and co-sponsored by Senator Joanne Brown, Speaker Teresa Terlahe, and Senator Sabina Perez. Madam Speaker, I seek again to support, the support of my colleagues in overriding the Governor's veto Bill 239-36. Hold on. While I recognize the Public Health submitted draft interim licensure rules and regulations for private adoption companies as required by Public Law 36-68, for the record, these rules were submitted to the Legislature on June 24, 2022, but they weren't sent to the Legislative Health Committee with jurisdiction on the rules until September 1, 2022. I thank Speaker Teresa Life for scheduling a public hearing almost immediately after the draft interim rules and regulations, which was just a couple of weeks ago, provided to her office. Notwithstanding the preparations of the draft interim licensure rules and regulations for private adoption companies, Guam does not have interim or any other duly adopted set of rules in place right now. Madam Speaker, to those who question why I'm still pushing for this override despite the Legislature having a set of draft interim rules in its possession, please tell me what is set in rules and regulations are. Please tell, tell me what set of rules or regulations are governing the company that claims to be Guam's first and only private adoption company, and any other private adoption entity that may have been established through a business license issued by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Madam Speaker, I would also like to address a point that has been made by both Adalup and a member of this Legislature suggesting that Bill 2399 isn't needed because Public Law 36-68 already requires every agency, entity, and individual under Public Law 36-68 to obtain a license from Public Health. If we were to follow the logic offered by Adalup and one of our colleagues, then Guam's first and only private adoption company. First private company adopted.
Please state your point of order. Are we? Just to check the clock. Are we running a clock or is this, are we doing unlimited open time debate? So if we're going to do that, then we follow through for the rest of the session?
It's just, this is under motions. Thank you, Madam Speaker. The problem is that, that company and other private adoption companies that may be in place right now haven't secured and are still unable to secure a license from Public Health because there are no rules or regulations in place. Madam Speaker, the facts before us are simply undeniable. Because the Governor refuses to require private adoption companies to first obtain a license from Public Health before these companies obtain a license from DRT, which vetoed Bill 239 possesses. We have a real problem before us where a private adoption company was issued a business license from Department of Revenue and Taxation without first obtaining a license from Public Health. It's the cart before the horse. We have a private adoption company that is legally authorized to operate without having met a set of interim or duly adopted set of regulations that this Legislature believed just months ago would be critical to ensuring the safety and health and welfare of our most vulnerable children. Madam Speaker, we have an opportunity to fix a public safety issue created by Adalup, and as difficult as it may be for some of us to admit, an issue that was also created by this Legislature last summer when we allowed private adoption companies to engage in child placement services without Public Health license rules and regulations in place. Overwriting vetoed Bill 239-36COR will ensure that once a set of draft or permanent licensure rules and regulations are adopted, Guam will have already established in law a clear and critical business license review partnership between Rev and Tax and Public Health. Madam Speaker, I urge my colleagues to set aside the personalities and the politics that have unfortunately found their way into an issue so important as the safety, health, and welfare of our children so that we can finally put in place the administrative guardrails proposed in vetoed Bill 239-36COR. Madam Speaker.
Senator, on that motion to place vetoed Bill number 239-36 into the voting file, is there any objection? To speak on the motion? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I certainly also rise again in support of the initiative by Senator Telo Titegui to ask that this vote, the veto on this bill be reconsidered by this Legislature. You know, I've said time and time again that, you know, talk about politics rearing its ugly head on something that really should not be an issue of controversy here, and certainly something that should not have prevented us from wanting to ensure, of course, that our children, that we always talk about our children, our grandchildren, how we love them, how we care for them, how certainly we as a community need to do a better job for all those children that are falling through the system. And certainly, children that are in this situation through no choice of their own become responsibilities of us as a community, we have a responsibility to make sure that they're taken care of as if they were our very own. We want to ensure that these children are in a safe environment. We want to ensure that decisions being made for them are the best decisions that are in their interest. We have a tendency, Madam Speaker, to let our personalities and our personal agendas and our desire for our own sense of success and importance sometimes take precedence over our ultimate obligation and responsibility to represent the public interest. And I'm not worried. I give Senator Telo tremendous support for her persistence because I don't doubt her persistence will pay off. Maybe not in the remaining months of the winding time of this Legislature, but I don't doubt there will be a shift in another month and a half of the direction of the new Legislature. And I'm sure she'll be just as adamant in wanting to change this, which is really not a major issue. I can't believe we're debating the requirement because we want to, you know, accommodate one particular adoption agency because we like them. And I don't dislike them. one particular adoption agency because we like them, and I don't dislike them. I think they're very good people with the best of interests at heart, but we can't make legislation based on our personalities and our likabilities. We have to ensure that legislation we put in place is something that's going to survive us and ensure that the desired policy that we're putting in place on behalf of our people will survive time. We require so many other licensures. I mean, if we want to go get our nails done, if we want to go get our hair colored or cut, we have to get licensed. We have to make sure that the professionals, so-called professionals, that are performing these services on us meet licensure requirements because we want, we don't want to have people out there performing these services that are not trained, that don't meet a certain standard, no different than you want if you're a dentist, you're a doctor. But with regard to this issue, because there's persistence on the other end of wanting to have their way, we don't want to support the passage of the safety requirement of requiring requirements, licensure requirements of any adoption agency that wants to be here on Guam, wants to operate on Guam, and wants to be involved in the handling and custody of our children. That's really all it comes down to, colleagues. And for those of you that don't support this, I mean, go ahead, dig your head in the, you know, dig your head in the ground, and your heels and everything else, because I don't doubt this will change without you. Sometimes we just need to do what's right. We can all be spoiled, children. God knows, I'm, you know, I can rank up there myself, but that's not why we're here. We're supposed to be above that kind of nonsense. We're supposed to be here to represent, as we all do, as those of us that are running for reelection, go out and tell our people, "Mani Lu Hoods and Mani Nahu Taotao Guam." Are we, well, we're so here to serve you. Please vote for me. I'm number whatever on the ballot with our smiling faces. And yet, when we get into office, how do we make our decisions? Do we make the best decisions on behalf of our people and our community? Or do we make our, our decisions based on our self-interest and our connections, our connections that make us feel so important in this community? And yet, are we doing the right thing? Because I can't imagine what it would be like to be a young, vulnerable child who does not have, for whatever circumstance, a mother or a father or a loving family member there to care for me, to give me a sense of home, to give me a sense of love. And then I'm put in the hands of strangers, and I'm going to depend on them to ensure my best interest. But colleagues, if we cannot do it at this level as policymakers in putting these safety measures in place, how are we going to ensure the safety of that child? Especially, Madam Speaker, when we read almost every single week in the newspaper, when we listen to the radio, when we watch the evening news, when we hear of the continued abuse, the continued abuse, sexual and otherwise, of children in this community, in our home, on our island. Even worse, where you have parents, as we saw recently, involving two young girls that are involved in abusing their own, sexually abusing their own children. Who can you trust? Who do you trust with your children? Who do you trust with your grandchildren? My list is very short. I don't know about yours, but I'm sure we're not less caring that we would not be compassionate of any child that walked in here, even if they were not our biological child, even if they were some stranger's child that we didn't even know who they were or where they came from, that we would not be caring and considerate of that child, of wanting to make sure they were taken care of, of wanting to make sure they were fed, of wanting to make sure they were not harmed. Colleagues, this is what this comes down to, and with or without you. If I'm around in the next legislature, I'm certainly going to be there to support this, this legislation again. I hope it's reintroduced, and I'll be there to support it, because really what we're trying to do is really so minor, ensure that there are licensure requirements for adoption agencies. That's really all it is. Why is that so complicated? If we're putting that in the books already, like I said, to get your hair cut, get your shaved, gosh, I'm assuming, I hope they have it if you're getting a tattoo, but not to do it for adoption agencies that will have custody of our children in this community that we all know and recognize as the most vulnerable. Why is that? The people of Guam out there need to ask, why is that? Because I'm certainly asking, why is that that this current body, that is so quick to pass bills left and right, up and down, spend millions of dollars without batting an eyelash, would not consider passing this or overriding this bill with the Governor's veto? This is politics at its worst, or politricks at its worst, because we can't do that for those that matter the most, those that need us the most, those are the most vulnerable in our community, colleagues, and you got to ask yourself, why are you here? And whose interests are you protecting? Because you're sure it's heck not protecting the interests of our people, least of all the children in this community. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on Bill 239.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on that motion? If not, is there any objection to placing vetoed Bill number 239-36COR on the voting file, notwithstanding the objections of the governor? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Senator, sorry, Senator, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to add the nomination of Carlin Borja into session agenda.
All right. On that motion to place the nomination of Carlin Borja, member of the Guam Education Board, onto legislative concurrence, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
And then I'd like to make the motion to move it into the third reading voting file.
All right. We'll, we'll get there just after motions. We're still on motions. Senator Ada, you are recognized under motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I'd like to move Bill 303-36COR as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, introduced by myself. And this is an act to add a new Section 849.16 to Article 1 of Chapter 8, Title 1 of Guam Code Annotated, relative to the read, to the designation of a portion of Route 4 as Seven Heroes of Moleso Highway onto the session agenda. The committee report has been loaded, and this was on the list of potentials for this session.
On that motion to place Bill number 303-36 as amended by the committee onto the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. If we're, if there are no other motions, Senator Nelson, we get a motion to go back to legislative concurrence.
Situs masi, Madam Speaker. I make a motion to move to, notwithstanding rules, to move back to legislative concurrence.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now under legislative concurrence. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Carlin RC, RCG Borja into the third reading voting file.
On the motion to place the appointment of Carlin Borja to the Guam Education Board onto the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on second reading. No. We'll vote when we get to third reading. Speaker Laje, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 277-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, which is authored by myself, and it is an act to add a new Article 2 to Chapter 75A of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Chamor Land Trust Commission, CLTC, to enter into commercial submerged lands license agreements and to be known as the Guam Undersea Access for Homes Act, or GUAAHA, into the third reading file. And I would like to speak on that motion.
Please proceed.
Just take a one-minute recess.
Go into recess for a minute. We are back from recess. Speaker Laje, please proceed.
Thank you very much. On Bill 277-36, in August of 2021, the legislature passed a, another bill, Bill 36-36, now known as Public Law 36-46, which authorized commercial submerged land license agreement between the Chamor Land Trust Commission and GTA for the purpose of landing submarine cables at a looping. The government of Guam currently does not have a uniform policy to govern the leasing of submerged lands for the purposes of submarine cables, nor a plan for taking advantage of the placement of these cables to diversify the industry and economic investment responsibly and fairly. So Bill 277-36 proposes to remedy this. GITA committed to draft an outline for a white paper which would at least feed the narrative for a grant application to fund a feasibility study in accordance with Public Law 35-132. However, the white paper is still in draft form, and the feasibility study is not done. According to testimony, there are at least 11 cables that land here on Guam, as testified by GTA, DOCOMO, and RTI. According to GTA, five are either half-life, with two of them that are probably nearing their end of life. In addition, according to the draft white paper by GITA, there are five cable landing stations. According, some existing license agreements are coming near to their end, needing renegotiation, while several companies and consortiums have expressed an interest to construct additional fiber-optic cable systems. These cable consortiums that partner with our local telecommunications companies include multinational corporations such as Facebook, AT&amp;T, Google, and Amazon. Expanding telecommunications investment will also benefit Guam residents and businesses by creating more connectivity and a more robust infrastructure to support modern commerce. It was my intention with the intensive work done by the Committee on Land for Bill 36-36, which was introduced by Senator Joe Son Augustine and substituted by the Committee on Land, to create a baseline and standard for license agreements specifically to land cables in submerged lands on Guam moving forward. This standard is more in line with the global market, meant to protect the people of Guam and beneficiaries of the CLTC from undervalued license agreements which were in place prior to this measure passing. We've carried forward these standards in Bill 277, the Guam Undersea Access for Homes Act, or GUAAHA, and they include a baseline of $100,000 in landing fees for new cable landings and $100,000 in license fees per year with a 2% escalation per cable, terms, to allow terms of 25 years and two-five-year options, which was calculated to reflect the average lifespan of the cables, which is approximately 25 years. The fees generated from these submerged land license agreements will go towards the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. Requirements for approvals and permits as required by the U.S. federal and local laws include permitting application review and approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for work in U.S. waters, the Guam Coastal Management Program Consistency Certification in accordance with the Coastal Zone Management Act of 1972, and the Guam Territorial Seashore Protection Commission pursuant to the Guam Territorial Seashore Protection Act of 1974 for work within the seashore reserve, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration National Marines Fisheries Service. Some general provisions for licensing include applicable requirements from the CLTC Commercial Licensing Stat which have been carried over as well. The Organic Act outlined that tided lands conveyed to Guam would be permanent, or sorry, all right title and interest of the United States and lands permanently or periodically covered by tidal waters up to but not above the line of mean high tide and seaward to a line three geographical miles distant from the coastlines of the territories of Guam are hereby conveyed to the governments of Guam, as the case may be, to be administered and trust for the benefit of the people of Guam. Public Law 12-226 in 1975 and another public law 22-18 in 1996 ensured that these returned submerged lands were within the jurisdiction of the CLTC. Public Law 25-45 ensures that subsequent return of excess submerged lands after 1999 may fall under the jurisdiction of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission. So recently, we, we compared a lease that the city of Grover Beach in California had for one of its cables that actually also lands on Guam, and where it had also authorized a lease of $100,000 in annual revenue per cable for 25 years with the potential for two-five-year extensions. That Grover Beach Landing Station includes cables that connect to Guam via Te Pungan PT, and thus, we, we patterned this after that. And we also looked at other stations around the world, including Australia, which our cables also connect to. In addition, Tata Communications recently exercised their option in telefag with approval of the CLTC for $5,000 per year for one year, and will be in the process of securing a new lease. The other leases prior to this bill being passed were also for similar amounts, $5,000, $10,000, but thanks to the research that we were able to do and confirmation by all these telecommunications companies during the hearings, we were able to confirm that Guam is entitled to and can receive much more than the amounts currently being received. In 2014, the government of Guam renewed a land license agreement with the submerged land Fish Eye Marine Park in Peti for $21,000 a year until 2039. It has also been clear through our research that the traditional appraisal methodologies were not adequately representing the value of these properties in the global market. In Queensland, they have a different model. The Sunshine Coast Cable Landing System is owned and operated by the Sunshine Coast Council through an agreement between the council and RTI. The facility lands the JGAS, or Japan Guam Australia South Submarine Cable. This cable and facility is expected to generate 864 new jobs and stimulate $927 million in new investment in Queensland, Australia. This type of achievement is also, I think, a potential for Guam, while we have these cables running into our island, that we can develop business hubs for these multinational companies. companies to do much more than just land the cables, but also to expand that, but those would be subject to additional research and investment by Guam. But this is the start, is to allow them to bring the cables in, these high-speed internet cables, to allow Guam to access these high-speed international cables and to connect the world. The fiscal note for Bill 277, the Bureau estimates a fiscal impact of $3 million in revenue over 25-year period. The problem with the fiscal note is that it combined all the cables, but really, the bill outlines that it would be $1 million per cable and not, I mean, sorry, $100,000 per cable, not $100,000 for six cables or the cable systems, it's per cable. And so, I think that the revenue estimate is actually too low. There's also an escalation clause in this bill, 2% annual escalation. The bill actually allows for up to six cables per license, per landing, which means the potential is six times what is estimated by BBMR in license fees for just a single lease. The public hearing on Bill 277 indicates a consensus of support from local and international telecommunications companies, including GTA, DOCOMO, Tata, ITNE, RTI Cables and Pacific Data Systems, with many of their recommendations given consideration and included in the amended version of the bill to include the distinction between regional cables and international cables and the establishment of a rate for regional cables at 60% of the base rate for licensing and landing fees. So in other words, that would be about $60,000 for a cable that is only regional. A definition of cable system to ensure that the application of the landing fee and license fee schedule are clear, and clarity on how existing agreements will be handled and how the new landing and license fees will apply to new agreements after existing agreements expire. Minimum coverage for insurance, as well as establishing initial and periodic review by the Guam Coastal Management Program. Now, this was very important to me because these cables are coming through, you know, sometimes our, well, obviously, our seashores, and they're coming through sometimes areas where we have coral and other things, and so, this is the entity that is going to ensure that we protect those corals and that the companies are forced to use additional methodology if possible to avoid any interruption of recreation that's currently ongoing in those areas, or any interruption of endangered species or other environmental concerns. So when we amended the bill, we kept the stakeholders abreast along the way, sent this to them, and so I believe that we still have the consensus of all these stakeholders. GUAAHA establishes the Bureau of Statistics and Plans Guam Coastal Management Program as a central local government authority, requiring the approval of the Bureau prior to establishing the system operational date of each cable. In addition, the Guam Coastal Management Program is acquired to establish guidelines for initial and periodic review of submerged cables landed on Guam. So it's not just a one-time allow them in, but they will also be able to review the impacts and request from these companies additional mitigation if necessary. So with that, I'd like to ask my colleagues for their support on this bill and thank them for their help along the way in achieving this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Is there anyone else that would like to give comments on Bill number 277-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture? Senator Sinagastine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There's two amendments here. I have a copy of another one, but I do have an amendment I don't want to speak yet on the bill. I just want to introduce the amendment. The amendment has already been provided to everyone. This is a Bill 277-JSSA, line 23, page 10. The amendment basically just repeal or strike out 3 of subsection 1 of section 75A204. And early in this term, we provided one of our communication carriers with an opportunity to expand and license the installation of undersea cables. The removal of this section will ensure that we're being consistent with what we provide them in law, so that all other applicants will be held to the same requirements. And as I look through the bill, I may introduce other amendments. Thank you, Sisus Mas, and I hope my colleagues will support this amendment.
Senator Sinagastine, are you making an amendment to the main bill, the main motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On the Sinagastine Amendment, which is to repeal subsection 75 Alpha 204 of the bill, which crosses out the notwithstanding foregoing, notwithstanding the foregoing should the CLTC determine that a cable system with one termination point on the island of Guam and another termination point landing on United States Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, the Republic of the Marshall Islands, the Federated States of Micronesia, or the Republic of Palau collectively, the Micronesia region, the applicable landing fee and annual license fee for such cable systems may be reduced to an amount as recommended by the CLTC but not less than 60% of the applicable landing and licensing fee. This is the Sinagastine Amendment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this Sinagastine Amendment? Senator Torres, you are recognized.
I'd just like to ask the proffer of the amendment if he'll so yield. Is this, is it a consideration for striking this language, a consideration that Guam and the CNMI or the other areas of Micronesia are treated as a regional area, and that's why there is a need for a discount or a consideration for a discount? I'm just trying to understand and appreciate why he desires to strike this language.
Thank you. Senator Sinagastine, do you yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The main gist of this amendment is to be consistent. Removal of this section will ensure that we're being consistent with what we provided them in law, the other communication carrier, so that all applicants are held to the same requirements. That's all. You know, we can't say yesterday, we're going to make sure everybody's the same, then today we say no. I'm saying let's stick with the rules of engagement and stay consistent. Thank you.
Senator Torres, does that satisfy your inquiry? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this Sinagastine Amendment? Speaker Talahe, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this amendment would, in fact, remove the different rate for regional cable lines and require that even the regional cable lines follow the $100,000 per year assessment instead of what they're currently paying, which is about $60,000, I think, to land in the Mariana's Islands. So just to let everyone know, this was, this language was proposed by Tata. They provided a portion of the language and a recommendation for a rate of 60% of the base rate, because that is what they claim their lines are, that their lines are regional only. DOCOMO requested for distinction of regional cables also, did not provide specific language. Per DOCOMO's testimony, they are paying $60,000 to land cables in the CNMI, and they stated, quote, "In the case of smaller local or regional operators, the fee could be benchmarked to the CNMI $60,000 or less than that, so that we don't lose business to CNMI, whereas larger international cable systems for which Guam is primarily a means to connect with other global destinations as a waystation for power, they could be charged a higher amount." So this is what DOCOMO pays for connection to the CNMI, which includes a direct line from Guam to Saipan and branching units that go to each of the islands. At the hearing, GTA opposed the prorating or downward adjustment of regional cables, stating that, quote, "Other ends where the cables land are collecting licensing fees are without adjustment downwards." So I just wanted to give everybody a fair opportunity to know what was said at the hearing, and I think one of the challenges, of course, will be to determine what type of cable is there, right? And I think these, that the CLTC will be able to determine that based on FCC filings and other documents submitted by the companies. But this would be the effect of this amendment. It would be to remove any different rate for lines that run strictly from here to the region, and the region that was outlined in this, again, it's the CNMI, it's the Marshall Islands, FSM and Palau. That's what we defined as the region. So I would leave that up to the body, but that was what was said at the hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Is that an objection to the amendment? There's been an objection to the amendment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the Sinagastine Amendment? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Madam Chair, and I guess listening to the arguments for and against, you know, this amendment, the concern that a question that I have, which is also a concern that was expressed by the author of this amendment, in that with this language, the inclusion of this language, despite that it already exists in, for lack of a better term, an existing contract, what then does happen to that contract or that law or that agreement that was already promulgated and set into law? Same time, I have to, I understand the, why the author of the legislation, you know, included this language for the fairness. Question is, okay, who do we become fair to? It's a... In one hand, we recognize that we want to be able to foster, you know, competition, and I'm all for it, but then we also have to recognize that this exists in something that was already decided upon by this body and in effect. So is there a liability on our part to take action either way? I would hope that before we close on this amendment, before this amendment is decided upon, that this discussion, we have this discussion and this discussion continues before we decide the fate of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. There has been an objection to the Sinagastine Amendment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too, when I looked at this part of the bill, I had some reservations regarding the discount, and then having heard the explanation by the sponsor of the bill, it kind of made a little bit more sense, but I just, I too am concerned about, you know, what is the, I guess, if we're going to give a discount, what is Guam getting in return in regards to, are we getting increase in economic activity? So that's something that I feel more comfortable knowing in order to, whether to support this amendment or not. So is it going to basically spur more economic growth for Guam? And, you know, I'm very much in support of diversify our economy through, you know, telecommunications. This is something that we've talked about over several years, and it's great to see that so much work has been put into this and to see it come to fruition and to even be, have an effect on addressing poverty on our island. And, you know, I really support all the efforts of the sponsor of this bill, but, yeah, I guess my concern is, do we have a plan on how this discount can actually create more economic growth? I guess that question is for the sponsor of the bill.
Speaker Talahe, do you yield?
Yes, I will, and frankly, no. I wouldn't say they discussed how much potential more business we were going to get if we allowed this type of exception. They did say at the hearing, though, their concern was that companies would bypass Guam and land instead in these other islands in the region instead of Guam, because they would have cheaper rates. And so, and, you know, obviously, they have existing connections and they wanted to keep those coming through Guam. The high-speed global cables come to Guam, and then they channel those out to the regions. So not necessarily, and I don't know, you know, I mean, we were trying to consider as well what was fair, right? And so, when we think about, one of the factors that we thought about when we considered what was fair was current leases. So currently, even the company that objected had a $5,000 year, per year lease, that's GTA, $5,000 per year total, that's a PD lease, it doesn't expire until 2036. And so, yeah, I think that was, that was the only concern that I can remember at this point, and that is, would these companies bypass Guam? And these, and we're talking about the big companies now, would they bypass Guam and go land in these other areas as opposed to the current arrangement, which is they land on Guam and then they feed off into these regional areas? So again, yeah, right now, things are not fair. So we've got, you know, one company in Aget with $5,000 per year lease, we've got another company in PD with $5,000 per year. We've required the new lease in a loopang to be $100,000 per year per cable with a $100,000 landing fee, and the companies have agreed to this. So I'm saying we can get this, and, yeah. As to the regional, I think, you know, part of it was, the only other way for the regions to get these lines would be for them to, yeah, get these international lines going directly there, or, yeah, paying the additional fees on Guam. So that would be, it's a difference between 60 and $100,000 per cable. All I can tell you is what the companies have told me. So that's, you know, there are two companies in favor of a regional rate, the others didn't seem to object, except one other company objected, and they are not in favor of this regional rate and thus this amendment. But that's, I can't tell you what these global companies would do without the regional rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Perez, does that satisfy your inquiry? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the Sinagastine Amendment? There has been an objection. Senator Sinagastine, you're welcome to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, as they identified the possible difference in price, this amendment only makes sure that we stay consistent, so everybody plays on the same baseball field, so to speak. To change the requirement, and this was brought up by one of my other colleagues, what does it happen to the other company now that has to pay more? So as we identify the other rates and the economic, if I remember correctly, on Bill 36-36, I don't think any of the companies said they didn't like what that company was going to be paying, and all we said was we want to be consistent. As a matter of fact, it was even mentioned in other discussions that we want to get the biggest bang for our dollar. All these companies that are now facing their license expiring are now pursuing. That's why, if they can get a better deal than what the other company got, then sure, why not? But I'm saying this amendment is to ensure that we're being consistent with what we provided in law and that other applicants be held from the same requirements. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. There has been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor of the Sinagastin amendment, please raise your hand. Oh, sorry. I just, Vice Speaker, I just saw you walk in. I'd like to make a motion that we go back and redo the vote. I must have miscounted, so I'm going to ask the question again. All those in favor of the Sinagastin amendment, please raise your hand. Senator Taidegui, you are recognized. Senator Taidegui, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Give me one second here. Having a little technical difficulty here. Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity to register brief remarks in full support of Bill 277 as amended. Madam Speaker, in 2019, I introduced legislation creating a task force to review submarine cables activities, including issues concerning federal and local policy governing landing stations and local and foreign investment taxation, infrastructure, and national security. Bill 56-35 became Public Law 35-132 in December of 2020, also require, which also requires a task force to develop policy recommendations regarding the submarine cable industry. Today, two years after the submarine cable task force legislation became law, Bill 277 was amended in under consideration, as amended, is under consideration by the 36 Guam Legislature, seeking to provide guidelines that will support fiber optic submarine cables activity. Madam Speaker, there is no doubt how important fiber optic submarine cables and the technology that comes with this industry are to families, businesses, the military, and our island's economy. Submarine cables have completely changed the way we interact with each other, and they impact the critical decisions that are made every day by businesses. Fiber optic cable, submarine cables involve a multi, involve a multi-billion dollar industry, which provides competing for those, for who can provide faster, more reliable, and affordable services to customers, allowing us to connect with friends and loved ones who are either close by or those who live thousands of miles away. Madam Speaker, Guam's strategic location, because we offer stable infrastructure and as Guam remains under the American flag, with strong and responsible legal, with a strong and responsible legal system, these factors help to incentivize billion-dollar companies to land their cables on our island. As the author of Public Law 35-132, I want to thank Speaker Talahi for her involvement in the task force and for creating a template that helps to ensure a fair and responsible deal is made for the benefit of our community. I would like to commend Speaker Talahi for including the provisions that will help protect our environment against potential harm that is also in this legislation and before any cables are placed on our precious submerged lands. Madam Speaker, it was brought up earlier, how companies may divert and go to other islands, but I truly do not believe in that, for it's important for these multi-billion companies to land cables in a secure location. And Guam has the infrastructure to cover that. With this, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 277 as amended, and I'm grateful to all those who assisted in one way or another in crafting this important and long-awaited legislation. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the main motion? If there is no one else, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
I just have some amendments that I would like to proffer. One of them is labeled SFP L20, page 15.
We're going to go into a quick recess.
Thanks.[1029.73]
The Illes de la Touraine, Juan is back from recess. I will acknowledge Senator Perez, you had the floor with an amendment. You may proceed at this time, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, I believe, two amendments that I'm proffering. The first amendment is line 20, page 15. It's to amend the bill to read, D., the general public shall have the right to use a seafloor, water column, and sea surface to enter on or across any portion of the licensed property for fishing and recreational and other recreational purposes. So what this amendment does, it strikes out unrestricted right. And the reason being is that when I saw that word, it kind of set alarms off regarding to like perhaps deep sea mining. And we don't want to provide unrestricted right. And considering that, you know, of course, we want the access to fishing and recreational, the area to allow for access, public access for fishing and recreational areas. But I think also the environmental impacts too. We want to, as a government, we need to protect the public interest when it comes to the environment and to have that, you know, to retain that responsibility and to ensure that that area is protected. So this is the reason why I'm proffering this amendment, and I ask for my colleagues' support.
Si, Jesus mase. Senator Perez, anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have the floor for your next amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the next amendment actually is being, it was sent, so I did a third revision so we can get a moment's recess so everybody can get a copy.
We're just going to take a moment's recess to make sure everybody has copies.
I mean, the current session of the last two in Guam is back from recess. We left off with Senator Sabina Perez, who was ready to proffer an amendment. So Senator Sabina, do you have the amendment in front of you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the recess, and thank you to my colleagues for their patience. So the amendment that I am proffering is on line 26, page 11. It's to add a new subsections to the bill to read, oh, "An annual compliance monitoring fee of $20,000 shall be paid per license agreement to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission on the first system operation date for the purposes of monitoring contractual compliance." And so some of the thoughts behind this includes that, you know, the bill itself is written very elegantly, I think, in that it incorporates so many checks and balances in regards to, anything from insurance to, you know, license breach of contract. But the issue, I think, is who's there to really oversee that? And I think with, you know, particularly the government, you know, we need improvements in this area to ensure compliance of agreements that we enter into. And I think, so what I'm offering here is basically $20,000 per license agreement. So if you have a multiplier of, let's say, five licensees, that could almost equal an amount needed to pay these very, these IT professionals which get paid about $100,000 plus, right? So it would be for the payment of one FTE. And whatever the cost is over that, the government, so basically this is a subsidy, and the government would also put in money behind this. The other thing to keep in mind is that with increased traffic, informational traffic comes also the risk of cybersecurity threats. And so I'm envisioning perhaps that this person would have that expertise to kind of monitor and ensure the traffic is safe. And we really need to also, you know, think about potential, these potential impacts and how we can mitigate them. So I think this is a, an important investment. Of course, otherwise, the government would have to absorb the costs, but I think this is, I think this is, you know, part of the public-private partnership, is that, you know, whatever costs that is not, you know, the fees, whatever the costs, the fees don't cover, that the government perhaps can potentially assist to as well. So I ask my colleagues for their support and also look forward to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Sabina. I do see a hand up. I will ask Senator Brown, I will acknowledge you on the Perez amendment, and you may speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to ask of a sponsor, you know, I can appreciate the fee here. I mean, you know, we did have the figure of $100,000 included in the bill for a landing fee, and that went through the public hearing process. And I understand the logic that she's presenting with regards to the need to address resources for monitoring the contractual compliances with regards to these authorities that were, should we pass this bill, are going to give to the land trust. But I'd like to know really exactly how that's going to happen, because I've had the opportunity to work with the Tomorrowland Trust. And I know they're right now, I mean, even their best efforts, they're still challenged to even meet some of the most basic compliance requirements with regards to land leases, agricultural leases, and their mandates that were passed many, 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 many years ago. So I'd like to know, how exactly does this add to the infrastructure capability of the land trust to actually monitor contractual compliance? Are they going to be able to invest this in their attorney? Who exactly is going to do this work? Is it so specialized, and are we just simply trying to add additional costs to this process? How exactly in the infrastructure of the land trust is this going to translate into ensuring that we're actually having this type of review? Because like, even today, let's not kid ourselves, today, right now, we can go to many Tomorrowland Trust properties and see lack of compliance. And the Tomorrowland Trust in many areas have not even visited these properties to ensure compliance. So how exactly is this $20,000 going to translate into monitoring? And how do we come up with a figure of $20,000? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
If the sponsor will yield.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Perez, would you like to yield to that inquiry?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, this strikes to the heart of this amendment. It's really to hire a professional. So we know there's IT professionals out there that are under, that do compliance. And so it's, the intent is to hire a professional that has the competency. If the Tomorrowland Trust is going to give out these leases, they should also have the capacity to hire competent professionals to oversee compliance. And that is really the purpose of this amendment, is to make sure they have the resources to do that. I hope that answers the question.
Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted further, I mean, this, I appreciate that, but again, the amendment doesn't specify the type of expertise that is being brought. And let's not kid ourselves also, unless something's changed in the last couple of months. I mean, the director of the Tomorrowland Trust has not even had a permanent director in over a year. We still have an individual that I'm sure at their best of efforts, but are dividing themselves between being the director of the Tomorrowland Trust part-time and still holding another position in another agency to which they are originally from. So I've got to wonder, in this current administration, how much of a priority the Tomorrowland Trust Commission is when they don't even have a permanent director? Granted, I was the one who raised questions on the professional activities of the previous director, but, you know, I would think that it would be a priority, because there's so many issues historically plaguing the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. While the original design and intention and purposes is honorable for our Tomorrowland people, I have an immediate family member who's the recipient, an eligible recipient of Tomorrowland Trust land. But at the same time, knowing the challenges that still exist now that have yet to be cleared up, the fact that we don't even have a permanent director unless anyone can enlighten me otherwise, that's what I, you know, up until the last hearing we had on the Land Trust Commission, I just want to make sure that if we're going to ask additional money out of the blue, which I, you know, this figure hasn't even gone out for a public hearing, I don't even know what the responses of the respective companies that would be required to pay this, because I'm not aware that this was brought up during the public hearings, how do we know where this money specifically is going? Or is it just going to go to hire another, and I'm, you know, my cousin? How do we know that's not the case? Because this doesn't specify that. And there's nothing to prevent that from happening once these additional funds are put in here. So if the sponsor could yield to that question, or that series of questions. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Perez, on the matter, would you like to answer? She's, she's asking you. She's asking you if you would like to yield to the questions as She's asking you if you would like to yield to the questions as it relates? No? Yes? Do you want to restate, do you want her to restate the question, ma'am?
Oh, I wasn't sure that was a question. I thought that was more of a comment.
No, it was an inquiry. Senator Brown, please clarify.
Yes, in spite of my commentary, I did add at the very beginning, how do we know it's going to technical expertise? Because as I ended, you know, I could be hiring my cousin, you know, I mean, and I do have cousins out there. I just, again, this figure came out of the blue. I don't recall any additional figures or charges that were going to be added. And in all fairness to these companies, yeah, you know, they're big, pocketed companies, but this was never part of the public hearing process. And if we're going to now start adding on additional cost on top of what we're already asking them, with really no defined purpose in the amendment on where that money's going, you know, that kind of raises a big question mark.
Thank you. Senator Perez, would you like to answer?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, really, this amendment is bringing Tomorrowland Trust, I mean, they've actually turned a new leaf, right? They've accomplished the settlement, and they're making movement to move it to the 21st century here with this allowing of leases. And so I think, in line with that, you know, we also have to think, you know, forwardly on how to ensure that whatever agreements the Tomorrowland Trust makes is also monitored. And in regard to that, that, there's another bill coming up that would address that. And, yeah, I think, you know, of course, when we're talking about laws, you know, implementation is, is one of the, it's not within our purview as the legislature, but although we do have oversight, we do exercise oversight over implementation. But I do have, I guess, more of a positive outlook, that this money and the way it's phrased, compliance monitoring, I mean, if there's language that we can strengthen, I'm good with that, I mean, I'm open to that. But I feel that, you know, the, yeah, that I think that the language here is opening up the discussion, that government, in order to ensure that we're not only getting the best deal, but that the companies that we are in partnership with are accomplishing their contractual obligations. And I think it's, this is more of a proactive measure, really. You know, rather than wait to see, you know, that harm has been done, a breach has been done after the fact, this is a, basically, an investment, a small investment, to ensure that these agreements that we come into as a government with, with private entities, that they're holding up, they're, they're part of the bargain. Of course, you know, we can't always assume that. Yes, the players today may be upstanding, but we don't know. This is a decades-long agreement. And we have to put measures in place to ensure that, you know, government's going to be, you know, we're going to not only get a good deal, but as well as to ensure that these agreements are held to. And, you know, this is really addressing a longstanding issue in our government in regards to compliance. And we all have experienced, I think many of us experienced, where, you know, we have, there's been agreements where, you know, compliance is not followed through. And it's, you know, we really need to shore up that part in government, to ensure that we're seeing, and we're taking the proactive measures, rather than wait till there's a breach or default, right? We want to be on top of these things. And so the way this, yeah, the amount really was, you know, decided more so that if there was a group, it wasn't meant to pay for everything. So this $20,000 annually was really part of a subsidy, you know? Government can also put in the funds to pay for employee or employees, as well as their equipment, to ensure that their compliance is followed through. So this wasn't meant to be a, you know, it's really a minor, a very modest sum, I think, for what's very important as far as ensuring compliance. So I don't know if that answers the question.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown, I yield the floor back to you. Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Frank Blas, I'll recognize you this time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Madam Vice Speaker, I hear the same concerns and more from the previous speaker here with regards to this amendment. I guess one of the very first things that I'd like to be able to find out is if the author of the amendment can yield to the question of, this is 20, where did we get this $20,000 figure from? You know?
Senator Perez, would you like to yield?
Yeah, so these IT professionals are paid about $100,000 a year plus. And so if you look at the license agreements themselves, if there are five licensees, that could maybe total up to $100,000, depending on how many license agreements we get. So whatever the difference is, the government would have to subsidize. So it was more of a, an estimate of what one FTE would cost as far as salary.
Senator Blas?
You know, I hate to say this, but it just, the figure still appears to be arbitrary, something that we've basically pulled out of the, with no study, no basis for it, other than the assumption of the number of people that, of licenses that could be, you know, that we could get, and the amount of money that we could obtain. And then again, listening to the author of the amendment, and as far as the discussion and justification as to what the necessity is for this, compliance monitoring fee, and then she started to get into the realm of cybersecurity and monitoring of this, I don't know if we want to get CLTC into the process of being able to monitor something that's technically, as technical as that. You know, and that's actually delving into the inner workings of that lease agreement. I thought the lease agreement was just to be able to provide them the ability to bring a cable. What happens in that cable? CLTC, first off, doesn't have the capabilities of being able to do that, nor do we. I don't want through this legislation that now we're going to add on an extra responsibility onto them, and then we're going to have to sustain it and fund it. On top of this, you know, I just become a little confused here, because one of the things that we first tried to do with this, is we tried to lower the cost, and now we're going to add costs. And we're adding on now new costs that haven't, especially at this amount, this hasn't even been discussed, other than through this amendment. What would those individuals, what would those companies who would probably want to be able to take advantage of this, or would like to see this legislation passed, what would they have thought had this been brought up in the public hearing? And for this purpose? So I, I've got some real issues with this amendment, and for that, Madam Chair, I've got no other choice but than to object to this amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Anyone else on the Perez amendment? If not, Senator, Majority Leader, on the amendment?
This just seems so weird. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, this is a very comprehensive bill, and it's very challenging, because none of us are subject matter, subject matter experts when it comes to landing sea cables and compliance. And so it seems like we just take things for surface value and the, and not consider the other implications that occur. But perhaps just a question for either the main sponsor of the bill, or the sponsor of the amendment. Do we have currently anyone or any agency on Guam monitoring compliance for undersea landing cables?
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. To Speaker Therese, or to Senator Perez, would you yield to the question?
I would yield what I know. I'm not the expert, as she says, but as far as I know, like, for example, CLTC, GIDA, there is no person who is currently monitoring for local compliance, or compliance with our local lease agreements. Federal compliance, of course, is ensured by many federal entities, including NOAA. FCC is the big one, right?
I know, yeah. Majority Leader, you're still recognized? Would you like?
So is that to understand that the federal compliance level for undersea landing cables looks out for the best interest of what happens to, what happens within our local jurisdictions?
Would you like to yield to the author of the amendment, or to the author of the legislation? Yes. Senator Perez, would you like to yield to that? Or Speaker Terlaie? If you can just clarify the question again, thank you.
Right, thank you, Madam Speaker. So the question was that, do we have anyone within our government agencies, or anyone that we contract out, to monitor compliance of the undersea landing cables? And the answer is, no, we are not, we don't. And so the, and the continued response was that there are federal entities, like the FCC, that monitors this type of compliance. And so my other question to caveat would be that the federal level is monitoring the compliance, but is that compliance within the best interest of our jurisdiction here? Because just last term, or perhaps beginning of the term, we were concerned about one of the legislations or implementations that was happening on our coastal zones. And Senator Rigel, who is the Chair of Agriculture and concerned about our coastal waters, you know, asked and begged the federal agency for more time for us to be able to say what we needed to say, how it was really going to hurt Guam more than, more than act in the best interest of Guam. And so we're looking at the federal level and the federal compliance, but is it really a compliance that we should be looking at towards what is best for our people, what is best for our island? And so is the federal compliance regulatory or regulations aligned with us as a, as a state, or as a territory?
Senator Perez?
Do we even know what's best for Guam when it comes to landing sea cables? That's the question.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Senator Perez?
Yeah, in thinking about how to respond to that, so Guam is in control of, you know, three nautical miles. And so there may be some overlap when it comes to federal oversight, but I'm sure there are some areas that, you know, local, that fall within our local jurisdiction, that we also need to oversee, that may fall, may not be caught by federal entities. So, yeah, I think, again, it's also contractually, you know, you know, when you're looking, when we're looking at them, this amendment really addresses also the contractual obligations. And so we have, it's very elegantly written, but who's there to ensure that these obligations are met? And that's why we need to hire a competent, qualified individual to make sure this occurs. So it's really taking proactive measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, would you like?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And, you know, I thank the sponsor of the amendment for that explanation, because it's very clear that this is what we need to do, looking out for the best interest of our Especially when we're here at the level where the rubber meets the road. And it would behoove us to hire an expert acting on behalf of the territory, on behalf of the people, to make sure that what is being done is best benefits our island. And so I stand in support of this resolution, because we do need a revenue source to ensure that there's contractual compliance. We do need a subject matter expert, rather than just winging it, for lack of better words. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sito Smasi, Majority Leader. On the amendment, I had Speaker Terlaie, and then Speaker, I mean Senator, Speaker Terlaie are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I concur with the previous speaker. I support this amendment, because it is correct. The first question, for example, that's going to come up with these leases, and the CLTC is tasked to administer them, is, well, is this cable a regional one? Or do you have six in there, or do you have more? And, you know, so I physically am not going into these cable stations and confirming compliance. We've pretty much, for the most part, taken their word for it, I think, and based on, you know, that they've got other people to answer to as well. However, I see no, I think it is important, if we are going to enter the global market, which is what this bill is intended to do, is to put us on that global playing field, that we, it would behoove us to have experts. I've seen the CLTC, and I'm not going to profess that they have any expert right now, so additional money to hire one would be good. Right now, for example, they're not even experts on how to best use their commercial land. And so they look to GIDA to be, GIDA's been designated by law to be the land experts of Guam as to value, right? But, you know, not to disparage GIDA, but some of the leases that we've seen are, I think, we can get better value. And so I just think to get somebody who is clearly in the industry, and maybe it's not, you know, super detailed in this amendment, but that would take, you know, oversight over CLTC, to ensure that that's what this money would be used for. It's to get that expert who's going to ensure, and it says here very clearly, contractual compliance. Contractual compliance, you know, to me, would include things, we're talking about a license agreement here, yeah, you're allowed to put six. Are you putting six? You're allowed to put international for one rate, and, you know, the original bill was regional for one rate, is that what those cables are? You're supposed to be making these payments, and if not, we get to go after you at this time, you know, for payment. And if they are prohibiting or, you know, impeding fishermen or other uses of these seas, we definitely want compliance. In fact, this was brought up at the hearing by the Bureau of Statistics and Plan, Edwin Rages, the Coastal Management Zone Director. And he talked about, he wanted some sums, so that they can ensure compliance on their part, because by this bill, they have been tasked to ensure, you know, compliance with the environmental concerns. And so we actually did include one portion of the bill that says that they are allowed to assess fees for costs. That's just for costs, for their monitoring and what they would have to do to do their job in this case. This is a whole other area. I do not believe we have this expert, either in GIDA or in the CLTC at this point. I do believe that this language will, in good faith, it can get us there, if it's used the right way, just like every other appropriation that we make. If it's used the right way, as intended, then it will get us there, and it will get us closer to that professional to ensure contractual compliance with these global companies, global companies. And I just think, you know, even that by itself, you know, we need, we need legal experts, but that's, I don't think, what's envisioned here. I think it's more an IT technical expertise for this particular industry. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Speaker. Terlaie, Senator Tadegui, you're recognized on the Perez amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation, if she should yield. This is regarding, Madam Speaker, the fees that are being charged currently for the fiber optic cables being laid, up to six cables, which is technically about $600,000. Is any of these fees allowed for administrative costs, or where does this money actually go into?
Thank you very much. I welcome that question, and I'm glad that was brought up. The, this bill-
This bill is very clear that all of this money is going to go into the survey and infrastructure fund at the Chamois Land Trust Commission. The whole purpose of it was to fund on a continuing basis the surveys that are needed to bring in the water and the power lines close to these properties and the sewer lines so we can divide them up smaller, into smaller lots versus the larger lots, in order to get these leases out. The biggest impediment to the leases has been that, it's getting, that they were giving out in the past leases to land that was completely unusable. And we need that property to be usable, we need to divide it up as, you know, into as many lots as possible. And so that's where all of the money in this bill is going at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Tidigui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, the government of Guam is notorious for, you know, building things but never providing a maintenance plan afterwards to maintain that building for years to come. And then we find that we have to, within five years' time, or scrambling for money to actually fix something that should have been done from day one. And that is to maintain these buildings, the infrastructure that we build. I mean, this is very similar to that. However, you know, I do hear the concerns of some of my colleagues where this fee was not discussed during the public hearing and asking the concerns or how would it affect these companies coming to Guam or those that are currently here, at least the three major carriers that are here on Guam. But I think it's important that we put these mechanisms in place and like the author of this amendment said, it's a proactive approach. I think it's something that should be required in anything that we move forward in building or supporting in any kind of infrastructure. And this is definitely infrastructure. So, you know, I'm kind of torn in between on this because I do realize the need, but I also realize that there is quite a bit of funding coming in from these cables that are being laid here on Guam, $100,000 per cable. And there should be some type of administrative cost, you know, that, to oversee this. It's not in this legislation, but it may be something down the line. Because right now, currently, this bill is the template, is the guidelines, when we move forward with any other cables coming onto island. Because, of course, we passed one prior to this legislation on the rules and regs for that contract between Chamois Land Trust and Submarine Cable. So I just wanted to state my concerns and maybe if this does not go through, pass through, that it's something that we can implement later on on administrative costs to any of these funds that are coming into the Chamois Land Trust. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tidigui. Anyone else on the amendment that's proffered by Senator Perez? If not, would you like to call for the vote or would you like to close? Senator Perez, on the amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Yeah, so in thinking about this, I know, you know, in looking at this bill, I just was hoping to make it stronger. And one of the things that came up was, how do we ensure compliance, contractual compliance, to support all the language that's put into the bill from insurance coverage? So how do we know that they're not reneging on insurance coverage, you know? And, you know, how do we ensure that what we put in language here in the bill is being followed through? And so I think, you know, compliance is a critical part to making sure that not only do we get the best deal, but the deal is actually being followed through. And I did, you know, in thinking about how do we pay for this, because I know the intent of the bill was to support Chamois Land Trust landholders to help hook up to utilities. And knowing from my research, you know, sewage costs at least $16,000 per household. And so when you look at the fees, $100,000 doesn't buy much. And so I didn't want to dig into that amount and looking at how we can, you know, pay for a needed service for our government. And so that, you know, like, you know, like any business would do, they would itemize these costs. And so, you know, trying to kind of figure out a way to support the service of government and to support the needs of our community, I thought this would be a modest sum which we can subsidize because I know this is not going to be enough for compliance efforts. So it's really, you know, when we're talking about public-private partnership, you know, we're not just talking about the economic gains, but also the costs too as well. You know, how do we leverage this partnership so that we are working together, not only to support the business, but also support the community? And so this is why this amendment is being proffered. And I thank my colleagues for the discussion and I hope we can continue this dialogue to Smasi, and I ask for their support.
Thank you, Senator Perez. There was an objection to this amendment, so all those in favor of this amendment, please signify by raising your hand.
Madam Speaker, can I just get a quick recess?
I'll afford you that, Majority Leader. A moment's recess. Ymina Trentai Sash, the Lieutenant of Guam, is back from recess. Majority Leader, I'll recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make your motion to recess at 3:00 PM, to return back at 3:00 PM.
So moved. We are in recess two, three.